All right.
All right, I would like to call the Village Council Annual Retreat Agenda to Order, February 2019 at 10:00 AM. We're at 10:05 and I show that we do not have quorum for the council. And also, we will not be making any decisions anyway, so Kim Vandenberg and myself will be, at this point, just listening in until we possibly have more council members join us. A reminder to the planning board, we can't make any decisions, but we're willing to discuss any topic you'd like to discuss on your agenda. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the chairman of the planning board.
You open the meeting up.
We do have a quorum, planning board. Let's call this meeting to order.
Does it make sense if I just make a few opening remarks? If that's okay, or you're going to call your agenda, right?
I would just let them, let's just move on with the planning board.
Okay.
I'll be honest, he's here.
What I'm saying is, you want to, you have an agenda to discuss with?
There's a few items, you know, that we discussed previously.
Okay, you go through the process though.
Basically, ask you, you know, questions.
But do you go through the process when you start your meeting of approving your agenda?
Yeah.
So go ahead and do that, and then we'll be here to...
Okay. Has everybody read the agenda? Any comments on the agenda as proposed?
John, this is, I mean, this is actually your agenda. This is the Village Council Annual Retreat Agenda.
Yeah, the joint session of the planning board part is ours. Near item one.
I'm fine with that. Is there, I would, I would ask that possibly we have a D, which is general topics of interest that we might ask some members of the council if they were committable?
Yeah. All in favor?
Add a D for general.
General topics.
General topics. Okay.
Motion to approve. Our agenda is amended. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Do you want? She's got a bad arm. Do you want to open general comments on you, or?
I just was gonna, I had a few notes to, you know, basically accomplishments with the planning board. You guys, and I know you've spent a great deal of time on the land use plan, and that's progressing, and we appreciate all of your efforts on that, given the, some of the constraints that you've had with, you know, getting to a decision point, but we're looking forward to that final, I guess, plan. The community survey completion and recommendation of council, I appreciate, again, I think staff would, council would join me with that, and commending you for getting that together and having that ready to go. We had review of Marvin Gardens development and assistance in moving with the first commercial developments. Curious to see where we're at with that, with the latest on that. You know, we've, we're doing this basically without a planner the last couple of months, so we appreciate your patience on that, but that, that has changed. And you said the mayor may join us at some point today?
He should.
Okay. I have not met him.
That might be him walking around.
Maybe that was him in a suit.
Oh, it's him.
It's him.
Yeah. He looked lost.
Yeah. Sure, that's probably him, so.
The planning board, the new planner. Yeah, that very well could have been him.
They said he was coming, sir.
I didn't think about, you know, him.
But that, that should really kind of help us, a full-time plan, I think is what this village needs, and they can stay focused on that, free up our administ, our new administrator and that. And then, you know, obviously, all the miscellaneous land issues, whether it's personal private property type stuff, but we thank you for your service, and we thank you for getting us to where we are today. So with that, I'll, we'll turn it back over to John.
I don't remember exact conversation, going out and checking some notes. We had, you know, which one of us put review of the financial position?
I think, did you? No, no, no. Well, it's here, and I think we all agree we'd like that, right?
Yeah. So if you want to, I can take over if you even want me to.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to say a few comments real fast. We did hire the planner, his first day is Monday, he is a civil engineer, so this is his first job, so he is, it is going to be a learning curve for all of us. We're very excited, he's a very eager and willing to grow.
First job as a planner.
Say again?
First job as a planner, or first job overall?
Yes, first job period.
First job, first job at college?
Well, yeah, he had some...
He's got some internships and some, like, paid contract work and stuff like that, but first, full-time position. We're really excited.
Where do you need school?
Georgia Tech.
Georgia Tech.
Looks like Barbie's reeled him in, too, so it'll look good to meet him.
And he's right around the corner.
He's driving by the tide.
He's a sharp...
First thing, we gotta cut that tie off as soon as he comes in there.
We gotta give him the dress code.
He's a sharp guy. We're excited, so, just wanted to mention that. Tom had asked me to add...
May I ask his name?
Now, who can introduce himself?
Rohit.
Sweet blog, that he made it here.
Kind of remember how to say his last name, it's Anamanchi.
You have one? Okay. So that would be great.
Say again?
A physics guy would be great.
When he says it once, it's easy to, okay. I'll introduce him in just a second.
Yes.
So anyways, Tom had went through some of our financials, they're all on our website, our audits. I actually pulled some highlights for you all, so you can have them, if you want to pass that down that way.
There he is. Welcome. Welcome.
This is our new planner, Rohit.
You have assigned seats?
No.
Joe Colino. Hi, nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the village. Hey, would you mind just introducing yourself around?
Yeah, sure. My name is Rohit Anamanchi. I'm the new planner for Marvin, and a recent graduate from Georgia Tech, and my experience is in transportation planning. But I live very close to here, and I was really excited to have a role that had a lot of responsibility, so I, I got in touch with you guys, and now I work here.
Great. And a short commute, that's impressive.
Oh, yeah.
Where do you live?
I live right off Marvin Road, on one of the neighborhoods there.
Do you live in Marvin, or?
I live just outside of Marvin, my neighborhood's the last one.
There's a lot of that around here, you know, just in or out.
Can you tell us about any internships you did, or anything?
Yeah, sure. I worked at Charlotte DOT for a couple of times, and the second time was more interesting, because I worked in bicycle and pedestrian planning.
PaaS, or just on sides of roads?
Both.
So you know about, like, community paaS and stuff like that?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And another one I had was with Heads Atlanta, which is a group that is focused on pedestrian advocacy. And I basically was in charge of a project that dealt with pedestrian deaths in, in Atlanta, and like, where they're happening and where that Georgia DOT should work on improvements to reduce pedestrian deaths.
Well, okay. Welcome aboard.
So Rohit, this is pretty much your entire planning board here, and I don't know if y'all want to go down the line and just introduce yourself real quick?
Yeah.
And then... You won't remember any of our names, but...
I'm Tom Charles.
And I'm Kelly Hughes.
I'm John Jones.
I'm Paul Capiello.
Michael LaBelle. Mark Peterson. And could you say your last name again? I really want to try to get it right.
Sure. It's Anamanchi.
Anamanchi.
You can call me Rohit, of course.
Rohit. Okay, good.
Hey, Anamanchi. Yeah, can you hear me? I'm four in the middle of the meeting.
For your information, we're one member short, which I think there's, council has at least one application to fill that vacancy.
Okay, you on your way in?
So, we will, we're supposed to have seven on the board.
And council, just so you know, council, we announced, did not have a quorum, so we're, just Kim and I are sitting here, the mayor and the councilwoman, so no decisions will be made, we're just here to listen, and kind of like you are, probably, so, listen.
So we did make his offer contingent upon annexation into Marvin.
It has to be by neighborhood, no, isn't by law.
I'm joking.
You can commit your neighbors to taking it.
Just pass it around.
You were in financials, right?
Say again?
Do we have applications for the open place?
Just one.
Just one?
Are y'all ready to get started on finance? So...
Christian Burisma?
That's my husband's name. I can't be...
Your husband's line for planning board, is that correct?
No, God, no.
That's who it is.
That's funny, while there's a lot of this mess in this world, so.
Let me add one.
That's funny, you're like, here you go.
This is the budget of this, I guess.
No, it's not the budget.
Mayor, can you get as far away from me as possible?
So the very first page that I handed out was a five-year analysis of our fund balance, and this is basically a good snapshot of where we've been and where we're going. The second sheet that's coming around is our audited financial net position, and kind of a snapshot of the fund balance. You don't really need to look at this long sheet, because it's encompassed in this five-year analysis. So basically, if you look at it, the analysis portion...
We didn't have the second come around?
That's it, you're in.
Yeah, this is it. Oh, I thought this was the first one. Oh, I didn't.
It's right there, it's top right there.
Oh, that's...
So I had some notes.
Could we get an extra one?
Please.
So basically, when you're looking at the five years, you'll see across the bottom the percentage of fund balance is 235, and it goes over to 149. I'll tell you, in my years of experience, this is a really high number for a percentage of, of fund balance. Usually, you see places that have 20 to 30 fund balance percentage, so this is really good.
So that's a percentage of annual revenue?
It's a percentage of annual expenditures.
Expenditure.
So basically, one month, one month's worth of our expenditures is around $80,000, so we, we approximately have, I mean, tons of money saved up so that we can, we can operate over a year without...
Bringing it in.
So we have money to spend if we'd like?
We do.
Or, or, or what happened in '16?
So I've got notes on that. So in 2015, that's when the capital project, you'll see a dip in that percentage down there, where it's 197 and 74. Those were when capital projects were set up for Village Hall, Greenways, and the farmer's market. So the money's still there, it's just in a different fund. When you see that one sheet that came around, that's the long sheet, if you look at the title, it says government funds, balance sheet, you'll see it says major funds, general fund, and then capital projects. So you'll see the capital projects is at 1.2. Did I lose anybody yet?
Yeah, if it is. Fund or government funds, okay.
Where is it at?
Balance sheet, government fund, page 13, or 13?
Yes, 13, very top line.
Yep.
General fund, capital projects fund. Those are your two savings accounts, basically. The capital projects are slated for specific projects. We've got Village Hall, farmer's market, we've got a ton of capital projects, but main one is Village Hall. So I think it's 864,000 that's in there now, so majority of that 1.2 is for Village Hall.
You're only going to be able to have a Village Hall?
No. And we're actually going to talk about Village Hall funding a little bit later, but I've got a plan for trying to pull some money out of it. And as you see, we've, we've got a really healthy fund balance, so the ultimate plan is just to pull some of that out of fund balance. I'm going to move some money around, but...
When did we start taking over roads, and how is that reflected in these numbers?
So, the, the POW bill, we just started last year.
Okay, so 2018 was the first time that we started spending our own money on roads, so it's not really reflected in any of these numbers here, right?
It is, it is. So if you look at the expenditures for last year, where you see 972, or 971?
Yes.
158,000 of that was for roads.
Okay.
So that's where there's an increase in those expenditures.
And there was what, two neighborhoods?
Three.
And a big portion of that was paid for by DOT, and the agreement to kind of get us onto the process of taking over the roads, so that it is their roads, we want to accept them where they should be, versus us ponying up to pay for what was their responsibility all this time. So, good portion was negotiated by DOT, but that is my... So in other, in other words, 158 isn't the true cost of those three neighborhoods? You're right, yeah, not even close. It was more like over 500,000, or close to that.
So the POW funds pay for everything but 158, is that the front of the...
POW funds, 158 of the POW funds went to...
Directly to it.
To it, yes.
How do POW funds get paid out? Like, do they come to us with a credit?
Yes, based on the amount of roads that we own, and that keeps growing every year, so we only own a small portion, so our budget POW funds was in the 130 range, 130,000 a year, but you have to spend that within a five-year timeframe.
So does it get paid out, like, in, when did it get paid out?
There's two payments, I believe, correct?
There's two payments, yeah, two allocations.
One is in June-ish, another one maybe September.
Or sometime in the winter.
So it's, it's twice a year?
Yep.
But it's 130 total, ish, 130-ish, so you get...
So it gets paid out every year, twice a year?
And I actually had a separate discussion on roads, so if y'all can hang tight on those questions, Nick is actually on his way in, so I wanted to kind of let him hear some of my discussion on roads. I actually have a plan with roads that, if you're interested in that, you might want to sit and, and listen for that conversation. So if y'all don't mind holding off, that would be awesome. But yeah, so the short end is, I think, Paul, you had asked about the expenditure, so yes, 158 is in the sheet. So '15 and '16 were those, were those capital funds that were set up, so as you see a dip in the fund balance percentage, it's not really, I can't say it's really accurate, because it doesn't encompass those capital projects. This is just strictly cash on hand, not including capital projects.
How did we get an additional $700,000 in '16?
Okay, good question, good question. There was a $500 contribution during that year from Toll Brothers to pay for the roundabout construction.
How much?
500.
Thousand. Okay. I was like, 500?
So did that immediately, is that in one of these balances to be outflowed for that, or?
So if you see in 2016, where it says 1.7 million, 500 of that is, is that appropriation?
So 1.2 is pretty much our revenue?
Correct.
But wasn't that 500, didn't they already have that money? And then they just put it into, DOT was holding on to that money?
Well, it had to come in from us, and it had to come out from us, so it wasn't in and out.
But they had it, to be clear.
Who had it?
DOT had it, right?
They have it now, I don't know if...
Well, is this for the roundabouts, or for the Toll Brother, the 500,000, in my mind, I'm thinking that's what they gave to us when they put that whole development over there, for the roundabout.
Yes.
And so that money was sitting in DOT's hands.
It was sitting in ours first.
It was?
Yes.
When did it go to DOT?
In 2016, the fiscal year 2016, '17.
I thought they had those funds. Then I was misinformed before, because I thought they had those funds when Toll Brother gave us those funds, they went to the DOT, or maybe they just were earmarked, and they...
Yeah, I don't know. The only thing I can tell you is in '16, it came in, and then it went out.
Okay.
I don't know.
It may have been nine months apart, it may have been two weeks apart.
Where are the outflows of where we're spending our money? I see all the balances and all that, I mean, you heard.
You mean, like, general expenditures?
Yeah.
It would be in our general budget, it's actually on our website.
Is there any reason, I'm not criticizing, I'm just asking, is there any reason we're not looking at that?
No, no, I mean, you, you're more than welcome to look at it, it's just something that council approves annually, and they do that, you know, they start, this is kind of the jumpstart of that process, in talking about projects and what they want to see in the budget for next year. So basically, what happens is we, as staff, kind of put the budget together, based on what we've been spending, they approve it, and then it pretty much goes from there. We make sure that staff is adhering to that budget. I have a copy of it, if you want to look through it, I mean, it's, it's pretty detailed, but everything's on our website. I think, Tom, you had maybe spent some time looking at it, and...
Yeah, I called it up here, sorry you guys don't have it, but what's interesting about it is, we generally never spend, you know, as much as we take in, so we always make sure we're under, you know, we're not spending more than we're taking in. In 2018, the most recent year, it looks like we had an excess of like 300 and some thousand dollars.
Correct.
So I guess I'm just curious, just like, so is there a strategy behind that?
Yes.
We're trying to accumulate some, some money, is that?
No, the strategy is, we, we budget on the revenue side very conservative, because we don't want to get into a situation where we're budgeting what we don't anticipate on bringing in. So a lot of it is just excess revenue that we didn't anticipate for, and also conservative
spending.
We're watching our dollars that we spend, making sure we're not going over our, over budget on things.
Isn't the revenue quite predictable?
It is.
What I mean by that is, you know what your taxable value is in your town, right?
Correct.
And the only thing that's left to figure out is what rate you set.
Correct.
The rate has been basically fixed at a nickel, a nickel, right?
Because that's a minimum statutory rate, right?
So that means, so that means our taxable value out there is about $24 million, give or take, right?
We bring in about 900 in Ad Valerum, and that means, that's personal property and real property, so car tax.
Okay.
And then our collection rate could change from year to year, but we've been pretty stable at 99%. Statute only allows us to budget from the collection rate that we've had in the past. For instance, if we had 80% collection rate, which is completely unrealistic for anybody, then you can only budget 80% of what you're projecting to come in.
Okay.
So we can budget at 99?
We can budget at 99.
But what I just started to say is, we bring in about 900,000, and that includes car taxes as well.
Correct.
So the taxable value out there in this town is well below 20 million.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ad Valerum is around 500 or 600, not 900, I'm sorry.
500 or 600,000?
Yes.
Okay. Get back into the five cents, that tells you that the taxable value that's being taxed is 10 million bucks. That, part of me says that sounds awfully low.
Say that again?
It's 5 million.
The, yeah, the property taxes are about 600,000 annually.
Right, and we collect a nickel, right?
And we collect...
For every thousand dollars of value, so...
Hundred dollars a value.
So let me go through the numbers real fast.
So what is that back into in terms of taxable value?
I think for 100...
So our, and our finance officer should be here soon, so she can give us her taxable value, but it, you would back it out, Tom's five, like, the five per 1,000. I think it's right around 1 billion in taxable value.
Okay.
But it's, it's a pretty high valuation. But, so we have five or six, it's 543.
12 million.
Yeah.
12 million.
Well, that's what I thought, but that's why...
Based on 600,000 and five cents.
Yeah, but it's, I guess it's five cents.
Five cents per, per thousand.
Per thousand.
Yeah.
So you divide, you just multiply, or you just buy, buy a thousand, or does that get you a billion, too?
Is that 1.2 billion?
Yeah.
Should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was right around that.
Yeah, 1.2, that's a big number, okay.
That sort of tells you what you're, what you have to do to tax rates, to get other numbers here.
Right.
Again, 500 grand to do three neighborhoods of roads, I think I heard you say just a moment ago, kind of tells you, you know, you got to life the roads and figure out what often you got to replace them.
Correct.
And that'll tell you how much money you need to be putting at the bank.
So, and the math is real easy when it comes to additional revenues, one cent equals about 100,000 for us. If you look at Ad Valerum, we're bringing in 500,000 in Ad Valerum property taxes, one cent equals about 100,000.
Okay, and then, just, just to go through that, so, so we got about 600 in property, property taxes, right? There's, and I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, there's a breakout of this 1.3 million on the, on the financials and the website. So what's called unrestricted intergovernmental, 514,000, so what is that? Is that the other, like, commercial, or?
Is that sales tax and stuff?
Sales.
Are, were you looking at the...
I'm looking at the, there's a breakout of the, of the revenue in the general fund, and it's basically, the biggest chunk, it's a huge amount, all right? So this is property taxes, this is the 1.3 that's on your schedule, okay? It's called, there's unrestricted governmental, it's 514.
That's our cash on hand, so that would be part of the fund balance. You're looking at the audit, right?
So these are revenues. These are revenues, so it's saying that, well, the money coming in...
Let me see that, the top of that sheet.
Sure.
See, it was...
See, this number, this number is breaking out, this 1.354. I don't know if it's just the terminology, but I guess I'm just wondering, I guess really what my question was, is this...
So unrestricted, so there are certain revenues that we bring in that's restricted, like POW bill, that you can only spend for certain things, so that is probably encompassing basically all your unrestricted revenues.
I guess the question is, I think going to Paul's original question, was, how much do we have coming in regularly, like, every year? It's obviously this, this number, the 600 of the property taxes, but would this number be coming in regularly?
Yes, yes.
And what is it?
As far as I know, it's all the unrestricted revenues, like the sales tax, anything that we could spend on whatever it is that we want to, it's not restricted for certain things. Like, you see where it says restricted intergovernmental, 136?
Yeah, that's right.
That's your POW bill.
That's the POW bill, okay, okay.
So any unrestricted is like other, other sources of revenue that we could bring in that's not restricted for a certain...
There's other restricted cash in the breakdown, so I don't know.
Like, for instance, I'm actually looking at the budget sheet that we, that brings in the revenues, we have the Ad Valerum, we have the motor vehicle tax, sales tax is 174,000, so that's probably a big chunk of that.
Oh, a big chunk, okay.
That we can spend on anything that's not restricted for a certain purpose.
And that, we don't have a coffee shop here, so that's from, everything goes into...
The county?
Yes, county, and then county divides it up by our population, so we have 6,800 people.
Okay.
We get a check every year, and we don't even have a cash register, but we're getting a sales check.
And then we have ABC tax.
Sure they love that.
And that's twenty-five thousand, so a lot of that goes in that fund restricted.
Okay, so my, we could plan on coming in consistently.
Correct, correct, yep.
Okay.
A little bit, a little bit. And that, that sales tax, that sales tax and alcohol tax changes, the sales tax is a big portion of revenues.
Yeah.
So that-
I just wanted to make sure.
That may be why we have a-
Just to ask a quick question.
I bet you're right.
And maybe follow up where Tom was going. We keep bringing in these funds and stuff, isn't, isn't there some sort of statute that says you can't, at some point, you gotta spend the money, and if you don't spend the money, then there's gotta be some sort of, you know, refund or something to the community and stuff like that, or you, we can just, because I know with HOAs, it's that way, you can only take in so much, we're not for profit or anything like that, but if we keep having all these funds, we've gotta start showing where we spend it, or there's-
There's no statutes that I know of that says you can't have in excess of so much money. Now, in Powell bill, yes, but in unrestricted governmental funds, there's no such statute that I know of.
And that should be rewarded for having a savings.
Well, most times people then ask-
Just to go to Joe's, what Joe said, so that's exactly where I was gonna go next. If you go to this exhibit three, I think we can just quickly go down, so look at exhibit three and look at the, those fund balances, that bottom section. And here we can identify, like, what is this, all the money, so we have, we have all this money, right? We have about two point six million dollars in extra, you know, balances we're holding, okay, right now.
No, no. Well, yes, one point four in fund balance and then one point two in capital projects.
Yeah, so what is the one point two? Is that the Powell?
No, that's, that's your capital projects. Nine hundred thousand of that is village hall. Eight hundred and sixty-four, I'm exact.
Nine hundred is village hall, and then the difference is whatever else we're-
Yeah, we've got greenway trails, which is Mary, right around a hundred and fifty, something like that.
Hundred and eighty-nine, hundred, I don't see a link being there.
We've got a couple little pockets of money that's there.
What is land acquisition, what is land acquisition for three sixty-four?
That is something that the council decided a long time ago to start saving money away from land acquisition, whatever that means, whether it was park, village hall space, whatever, whatever land acquisition.
So that's on top of the one point two if it were used for village hall? So this would be money we could use for trailways and that sort of?
Yeah, but I'm trying to take it for village hall, so.
Yeah, so I think, why don't we just go down those numbers and see, like, you know, is this money to the question of, like, well, do we have extra money or not? Like, like the three sixty-four, do we have a use for that money?
Yes, that's the part of my discussion for, as of now, no, but my intention is to let council know that we need more money for village hall. We, the village hall project is slated for about one point five, one point six.
So you might need to, okay, so you might need to transfer.
But it was also, there was done years ago, like, ten percent or something was put aside, so we, we took a stab at a few properties that when they came up for sale, it would make sense for the trailways and, you know, you're not having to buy easements and stuff. There was a property right on Marvin Road that we took a stab at a couple years ago. Nothing came through with any of that, but it's nice to have that money there where we can just pay cash if we needed to, or having that balance to move, if we do go to the loan in the process to go to the loan, we were pretty secure financially.
I think you just touched on the question I was about to ask, and that is, it's great to be able to buy things with cash and not have to borrow to do it, but since this building is gonna last thirty, forty, sixty years, wouldn't you take out a mortgage and just pay it over time?
It, that's what they did, and we just got them, which actually affected our, should have affected our income, because what we paid for the park was a very short-term loan of about five years, that was just paid off in February. So now we're seeing that, whatever that payment was, you probably know more than I do, but, so that goes back into that, so I agree with you. It all depends on where the rates are and stuff like that, but to your point, I mean, I'd rather have cash on hand. Because as we go forward, we gotta understand that we're taking over roads. And when we took over these roads, that did not include curbs, that did not include stormwater, okay? So none of this was, was, was brought up when we were talking about taking over roads. It's nice to take over roads, but you're getting, you take, you take over everything when you take over roads, and DOT basically, so having that slush fund that may have to be moved at some point, I'd, I'd much rather take a low interest rate if we do that.
And I have something to piggyback off of, if you-
Well, I was gonna ask, when you've taken over the roads, is, the new neighborhoods that are coming in, if they're gated communities, they have to take care of their own roads, is that correct?
Well, I don't think they can be gated communities right now, but if they are currently gated communities and they come into us, they would have their own responsibility for everything.
Would you call the, the building across the street a neighborhood, or, because that has a gate, Casey Crawford's?
That's a private, private gate.
Okay, there's four or five homes in there?
Yes, they took a, we, we abandoned that road.
So since we took over roads, if we build a new neighborhood, we own the cost of putting in the roads, the curbs, and the stormwater?
Well, that's gonna be on the, that's gonna be on the developer's.
Okay, so developer will pay for the installation.
After everything is completed, gets signed off on, then we, we take it over, so.
So we take over making of storm ponds, curb repairs, asphalt repair.
Correct.
And, and if we upgraded the standards of that construction to DOT's level in order for, to approve projects?
The engineers will come in.
Versus like what they did in Providence, now sell home.
Are you talking about new construction?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be up to-
Because that's-
Yeah. The roads would have to be bonded, but, you know, as the developer's doing it, then our inspector comes in to make sure they're up to quality for our standards, our specs, and at that point, we will accept them when they are, the bonds are released to that developer, back to that developer.
But from an engineering perspective, they have to be engineered to DOT specs.
Yeah, correct.
In fact, I think we, correct me if I'm not wrong, instead of going through all the expense of creating new standards, I believe our engineers were working with Waxaw at the time, and they were kind of using their standards that they, some of their standards, they have something tied into Waxaw that we didn't want to get into expenses, creating a whole new standard, and, and, you know, what we, what we expect, but I will tell you, I believe it is a little more stringent than what DOT is.
We have a standards and specs manual, manual that we've adopted, and they're, they're in line, the engineer came up with them, I'm, I know they're in line with DOT standards, I'm not sure if they're a heightened level more, but they have to adhere to that specs manual.
So was land acquisition originally for the trail?
I, I can't tell you that either.
No, I think it was for, like, the park.
Probably the park.
Just-
Anything.
Historic building.
Land acquisition to buy, if we didn't, we, we actually, we, we backed into the free three and a half, four acres on the corner where we're putting town hall. That was because of the road shifting and it going to a roundabout rather than thing, then all of a sudden, all that corner that was owned by the developer, they basically bequeathed that to us. So now we have three and a half acres, so we're, we're sitting there going, okay, we don't have to purchase land now, which is a good thing, I would think, that you're not having to find that piece of property that somebody's gonna sell. So that, that's why that was, what that was there for. Where it goes from now, that's a, that's a decision from, do we want to spend it on, I guess we have the ability to move it into, to roads, I mean.
We can move it wherever we want.
There was some talk when we met in this room with the DOT folks about the third roundabout?
Yes.
And there was some discussion that if the community would put up money, it could move up the list quicker.
The community is already committed to X amount of dollars.
Well, what is X?
Two twenty?
X amount is two hundred and twenty dollars, and then we're on the hook for fifty percent of any overruns as we work for that.
What's the, I thought it was two summers.
No, next summer. Not, not like this year's summer, like-
Twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah, not summer, a couple months from now, next summer, okay. Oh, I thought it was twenty twenty.
Next summer, not this summer.
And we were, it was initially, like, being talked about for twenty twenty-two, so we have moved up.
Okay, because Kelly, I think the last time we talked about it was still there's some stuff that's-
But then it had dropped to this year.
And there's still stuff being worked out, but the last I heard, the Odel's were going to be donating a section of their property, and then N C DOT is gonna be purchasing a section of his property, and there's still a lot of questions about who's gonna own that.
Now, does that have a potential hold of the project that you guys in the, okay, so, so we can expect next summer to have the third one in?
Yes. And Mark, sometimes when we refer to years, we'll say fiscal year twenty-one, that means twenty twenty-one. So if you got twenty-one in your head, then it may have been because we said fiscal year twenty-one, which really means twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
So that, that may be where that twenty-one came from.
Okay, yeah, I mean, summer or twenties, maybe.
Going back to your question about financing and getting a mortgage and stuff, we can always go back and get a mortgage for the property, once we, we cash fund it and pay ourselves back, there's, there's a way we can do that. So if we go ahead and go through this project and move this money around to pay cash for it, we can always go back on the back end and, and get a mortgage for it.
Get like an equity line, I don't know, sure.
The reason we would do that is to avoid going through the L G C process right now, because it's a very timely process, it takes anywhere from three to six months to get approval from them, because anytime you spend money in excess of three hundred thousand, you have to get their approval if it's-
Who, who's that?
The L G C.
Who's that?
The local government commission.
How much money have we spent on village halls to date?
I, I don't have those right in front of me.
Approximately a hundred thousand, five hundred thousand?
The plans have been about a hundred thousand, so if I had to guess, somewhere between one and two hundred.
And that's the soil, looking at the soil and the corner?
And that's included in the one point six, that's not one point six plus the two hundred, right?
No, yeah.
So just to go through a few more numbers on this, this fund balance, so the loop projects of a hundred twenty-seven, is that money we intend to spend on the loop, or?
Yes.
You're smiling?
Mary's already got that slated, she won't let us touch it.
Okay, so we're, okay.
You said the loop, you mean the-
Is a hundred twenty-seven enough?
No.
No, it's not.
How much, how much do we need?
Can I, can I explain it? I spoke to Chris, because I need to be detailed about our capital plan, and it's just terminology, it's really just greenways, period. There's actually another bucket, it's a technicality between what was budgeted this year, which has a bucket, and then what they set aside years ago for greenways. So it's a total of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand for the two buckets, but that description of the loop is really misleading, is, is any greenway.
Right, is, I guess, a hundred twenty-seven, you've got to use for that, right, for that, and then, that other money is coming from the, the revenues that were-
No, it was real, what they did was they, they had a bucket of a hundred, and it was actually a little bit more, and they'd used some for surveys, but right now, it's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand between the two buckets, but Ennis Brook and a couple other smaller trails we budgeted for this year, so they had to put those in a separate bucket, but they're still, they're still the same thing, it's still constructed.
And let me explain those buckets real fast, just so you aren't-
Yeah.
Um, the, the bucket that she's talking about would be the loop project that you see, the one twenty-seven, and some of that one point two eleven that you see in the capital projects fund.
Okay.
There's, there's a few buckets in those capital projects, there's, like I said, the village hall has eight and sixty, then whatever, over a hundred thousand for something to do with greenways.
Okay.
And we've got a twenty thousand for signs, and we've got a twenty-five thousand for farmer's market, don't quote me on those numbers, but roughly that's what they are.
Okay.
Mary, is that, the one, the one eighty-seven, is that to complete the entire?
No.
So how much, how much, how much would it be to complete the entire?
You don't wanna know.
Well, you know, we do wanna know.
No, it's-
I do.
What was it?
Let me finish, let me put it this way, there's, there's tier one trails, which are the only things we even have in our capital plan. And that's like the major trail that we would talk about, along, you know, our major roads and so forth. There's, there's a section, just to give you an example, between Crane Road that goes up Barnes Grove Road to Providence Road, which is almost six hundred thousand dollars. And we, we personally believe that's a factor, because there's so many big estates and homes and things along there, but yes, that could potentially happen.
Is there easements we can use, or we have to acquire land?
We, no, we have to get the property owners to give us easements. So what I would say is for the near term, like next year, what we're proposing, we're gonna need about thirty thousand more, and then the next year is like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So it's about, it's between about a hundred and fifty and about two hundred and fifty for the next three or four years, but then there's some that are out further into the future.
What, what's the process of prioritizing where it goes next? We are such a geographically disparate community.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a juggling act, like, right now, we, we were supposed to do Ennis Brook years ago, but now we just found out the sewer line, they're digging it up because they're gonna replace the sewer line. They're unhauled for that. The village hall is unhauled because of the roundabout, so it's always, we're sort of juggling, you know, what, what, where do we have easements that are open, sections that we could do? But the way we have decided to look at it is, we're not gonna be able to do, you know, from point A to point Z, we're probably gonna have to do sections that we can do. Like, we, we believe along Crane Road after high school, the schools are gonna be, want us to do that. So that easement's probably gonna be an easy one, but there are other sections that are gonna be very difficult because of the homeowners that are there, but like, Briwell will do a section because of that development. So what we've done is we've sort of shuffled things around and say, we'll do pieces as we can, and hopefully over, you know, the next fifty years or whatever, we'll have it all connected, but there, at this point in time, we can't really say we're gonna start here and go all the way to here. But that is the general plan, is that you start where the loop is, and you go to basically Providence Road.
So real fast, I've started passing something around, which is called a capital improvement plan. We've got fifteen minutes left here, so I wanna try to get through a couple of things. This is actually the next item on the agenda for council, so if y'all wanna sit through this process, I think it'll help you understand more of the financial means of how we're going forward and planning things.
Yes, I just wanna make a couple statements, okay? So here's my, here's my take on it. Obviously, I work at Bank of America, so I know a little bit, that's why I asked to put this on here. I would say our financial situation is impeccable, okay? I mean, we, you know, you don't see this kind of luxury of, like, all this cash is laying around in buckets, and hey, maybe I could move it around. You know, we spend less than we take in in revenue, we've got wealth, wealthy demographics, so we collect ninety-nine point nine percent of all property taxes, which is really unbelievable. However, what this discussion shows is really, I don't know, one, I don't know to Joe's question, what is the retained earnings after, you know, a full capital study of what we need to spend, forecast it out over the next five years? What is the unassigned number? You have five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars down the bottom, that, you know, obviously these are sort of guess, estimates, but I think we need to zero in on what is that number, and hey, if that number comes out to be eight hundred thousand, hey, maybe there is a question about, what are we gonna do with that money? And if not, why are we sitting on eight hundred thousand dollars, right? What is the plan for that? So I, I think that we need to work on capital forecasting, we need to work on a better allocation that's accurate on these numbers, because they are not accurate today, and I think we have to ask, who's in charge of that? Is that, you know, who's that going to be? Do we, is the finance officer gonna do that? And that's just my two cents as a Bank of America analyst, I would say that those are things we need to.
When you say capital forecasting, you, you mean for revenues or expenditures?
Expenditures, capital expenditures, and, and as Mark mentioned, what's the prioritization? Can I see a clear prioritization of where that money's gonna go?
Personally, I think that gets addressed when we get the survey back. What does this community want and stuff? And that gives us better direction of what, what-
I'll come back to that question.
You know, what happens with that.
To that, to that point you just made, if I could just, I have been thinking about, we spent a lot of time doing the survey, and just in our last meeting, we were shown, you know, the whole, you know, this is gonna be the community hall, and this is what it's gonna look like, and now I hear the price is up. I feel like there's no valid reason why we wouldn't include that question to the community, so probably the largest expenditure we'll ever make going forward. You know, do they value, or what is the cost benefit of analysis of that type of expenditure versus, say, more public use lands, like more trails? You know, like, what does the community benefit, the members, the, you know, the residents, the taxpayers, how do they benefit from one point six million on a city hall versus, you know, Mary mentions, oh, you don't wanna know, it's so big. Well, maybe, maybe we do wanna know, because maybe we'd rather have trails than an elaborate city hall. I mean, we, we're, we're a good government, we're effective, but let's not fool ourselves. We don't, you know, we're not burdened with a lot of the things that the traditional municipal government's burdened with, but, you know, we're not running sewage departments, we're not running, you know, electric company, we're not running police departments, we're not running fire department, we're, just saying, I think the, the citizens might wanna have a voice in what we spend the one point six million dollars. Is it, is it community greenway infrastructure, or is it a? I think you're, Paul, Mark, too, I think the last time that the community was presented with town hall, we were speaking eight hundred thousand dollars. There was no mention of one point six million dollars, and I, I think it's, you know, a derelict of duty if you just assume that they know that it's one point six million dollars. I think people might have a vastly different opinion if you tell them, we're gonna spend one point six million dollars on a village hall that, you know, nobody comes to our meetings, what do we need a village hall for? You know, we have all that money, we're six thousand people right now, if we come into twenty thousand people, well, then we, yeah, then we possibly need a village hall.
So two things, real fast. Mark, the community survey questions are actually on council's agenda for consideration on February twelfth, so if you wanna raise that discussion, you could-
Well, can we add one between now and then as part of the subcommittee? Like, if I wanted to get the subcommittee?
I, I, I mean, I, I think it's, it's doable. My question is, didn't the town hall come out of the original survey, and so they're acting on the original survey suggestion?
I think it's the whole reason we're doing this. I think we're saying, this is such a huge amount.
It's a hundred percent index.
Like, it's the biggest issue, monetary issue before the community, and we're asking what their opinion is on all these issues, I feel like it's an eight hundred pound gorilla that we don't ask that. Like, would you rather spend the one point six on this, or this, or what other?
So two things, you have two council members sitting here today that I think can bring that question to the board when it comes up in February, assuming you're gonna be there as well, John, for the meeting, so you can bring it up too and let the entire board know.
Well, technically, this, because I know it's coming to close, this is our planning board meeting, right?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to the planning board that we add a question to the survey that gets the community feedback on their view of the expenditure of one point six million dollars, and whether that's best done at a town hall or some other capacity. If I may, Kelly and you are chairman and co-chair, can we delegate that to you to come up with a? Well, I'd like to, I mean, the planning board even, I think we could vote whether we do.
Could we discuss this at another time? Because I think there are, I think there are implications to this question that could derail something that's been in the works for a long time, so I think we need to-
Exactly, which is why I want to do it.
We don't have the time to discuss it here, like, we just don't have the time, so if we need to call, like, an extra meeting, even if we get on the phone, that's fine, So if we need to call, like, an extra meeting, even if we get on the phone, that's fine. But I don't think we really have the time right now to, to really dig into, if we ask this question, A, what would it be? And, and.
Well, I don't want to wordsmith it. I want to say the concept of, do we feel it's the right thing to do, yes or no, to ask the community for this, this perspective?
And I do want to note that I can't tell you for sure it's going to be one point five and one point six until we actually get RFPs back. It could be one point one, it could be one point nine, I don't know.
One point anything, it's a year's budget. Above one is a, is a whole year's budget, a whole year's tax.
You know, you refer to the, the last survey that was done in?
Thirteen?
Thirteen.
I don't know when.
Over five years ago.
And I'm not saying on the against side, this thing is important to get the community perspective.
It was eight hundred and fifty thousand or whatever.
Construction costs have gone up.
Costs have gone up, you know, just since oh eight, you know, they've gone nuts.
Claire, I've been on record on this from the get-go when I started with Wesley Chapel, when I did my due diligence with them. And back then, when they were donated the land, so they received the land for free, there was discrepancy of what they paid. So they're, they're in seven, eight years ago with a building that they have similar to what we have size-wise. And it was one point five.
How many years ago?
Seven, six, seven years ago. So I've, we talked about it openly with the, with the architect. He was much more in line, and he said, and you can confirm that because you were in the meeting with me, that you're looking at pretty sure one point, in the one point five. That's what he said to at least budget for is, is, is the low number. So that, that number has changed, which.
I can't think of a more important question.
So you have a motion on the table.
I have a motion. I would like to make, again, I don't want to wordsmith it here. I want to say, I believe we should add the question that solicits the community feedback on this expenditure.
Yeah, can I just suggest, just a slight tweak, just because there may be some sensitivity to putting numbers out, you know, like, a million dollars. I think we have two million dollars, you know, we want to do, maybe, like, clear prioritizations or have to rank what they want.
Again, I think we, as a group, can go wordsmith it. I'm saying the concept of getting the community feedback on this expenditure, I, I, I think it's important to do. I made a motion.
Can you repeat your motion?
Is there any way this question?
Can you repeat your motion?
Can you repeat your motion?
I move.
Can I just ask this question? Is there any way that we can add this into one of the lists of things we're already asking down? In other words, we're asking about prioritization for projects. Why not put this on that list and see how people react to it? Because I, I do think if you just simply say, how do you feel about spending a million six on the town hall? You're going to get no as the answer, right? I mean.
You're setting, you're setting.
But in fairness, that's, that's, why, if, if you're not going to use the thing as a person, of course they don't, right? I'm not using it, I know. So the town has to prioritize things. And so I'm just asking, why not list this among the prioritizations and say, guys, put it on the list? If people put it as number four, that'll help.
I'm just saying, get some level of community feedback.
All right, now, all right, we've been talking about the survey.
It is the community's money.
For six months. Six months, something like that. And it's still, before we get any feedback back, where at least we can understand it, even if it goes out tomorrow, another three months, probably.
I would think Counsel would ask the feedback when you give it to them.
No, I'm talking about from the.
The result, he's talking about the results.
Results, it's going to be a minimum of three months. All right, I've also been talking about village hall for well over five years. I mean, and, and it's been, you've been sitting in these meetings, and it's been doing this. So how much longer are we going to do this on all of this stuff, people?
So, and I, I just want to, we, we've got to wrap it up. You've got a motion on the table. We can always bring it to Cancel. They can make that decision at that time if they want to, to add it or not. If y'all want to vote on the motion, I'll be more than willing to bring it up to them and let them know this isn't a concern.
All right, I second the motion.
And what's the motion?
The motion is to include a question in the survey to be determined in format and phrasing by the subcommittee or the, at another time, that solicits the feedback from the community on the, on their, their thoughts of spending the approximate amount of money required to build a town hall in its current design.
Do you think you'll get?
Versus other possible expenditures we could make about it.
And if that question is possible, you think that's something you could get in before a meeting?
I, I've already, I've sketched out.
You will have a version on the twelve.
Okay. I've sketched one out, I'll share it with the committee.
Okay.
So can I say something before we vote?
Sure.
I, I cannot say yes to that, but I could, could agree to something more, a more general motion. What you just put out there is so specific, you're, you're locking us into something very specific, so.
Okay, my intent is just to say, it's wise to get feedback on the largest expenditure the community's going to make.
And I agree with you.
Again, I'm okay with how we do that, or if it's prioritization.
Mark, how about a question that, that said, you know, we are intending to construct a village hall, and what, here are some dollar amount ranges, what would you select the range, what you think we should spend, or?
Can we just be as general as possible so that we can dig into this as a group?
I think Paul's suggestion about when we get together, wordsmith it, it should include priorities of what's most important of other things, not yes or no in town hall.
So make a motion about that. Don't get so specific about.
Well, I amend the motion to say, I would like to include a question in what we have ultimately recommended Counsel on the twelve. A question that solicits the public opinion regarding the priority of large capital expenditures in excess of a million dollars.
Prior, the public.
Added money.
The public.
You, you're going.
The public opinion, perspective.
When you throw dollars in there, they're going.
All right, if they're dollars, they're going to be spent.
Yeah.
A general question would be, basically, in equivalence of a one-year's revenue would be fair. We're at one point three, that's, that's on the low end, you know.
And how, yeah.
Are y'all good on that motion? Because we need to wrap it up.
Yeah, it's a lot of.
John, you can call for a vote.
Can I ask a question though?
We've got three minutes.
The comments that I made, what do y'all think on the Council about that being a potential takeaway, when you record the takeaways at the end, about, you know, reviewing the, reviewing the allocation of the, of the fund balance, and then also the cap, looking at capital expenditures, what do, you know, do we need to have a capital forecast to see whether we have, you know, what is the true retained earnings?
Tom, I would support that. Can we just vote on the motions? Get that out of the way, because we, the motion is second.
Oh, sorry, I thought we.
John, go ahead.
His motion's on the table. All in favor? All right, I'll go with it.
Tom, I think that my next conversation with Cancel is going to kind of encompass some of your concerns or your questions.
And we're allowed to stay, right?
Yes, you're allowed to stay.
No problem.
I voted no.
So we didn't really get anything.
I voted no.
You voted no?
No.
All right, so do, so what is, what is the vote? Did everybody but Paul vote yes?
Five to one.
Just for clarity, though, you're in favor, just so I know, you're in favor of maybe adding a bullet point to one of our existing?
Yeah, I have no problem throwing in town hall, and one of our already existing questions speaks to, you know, prioritization.
And I would be open to adding it to a question as long as we get the feedback.
So if y'all are okay with that, we'll close those two something else. We've got two more to talk about in about two minutes.
I think annexation plan update is much more important.
Yes, and it's, it's really a moot point. So I can update you real fast on it.
Let her talk.
I think there was a misconception years ago about annexation, that people were confusing two different things. I think that what had happened, we had some annexation going on that was being challenged by petition, which is naturally statutory right for people to do so. During that time, the legislator actually put a freeze on involuntary annexation. So I think people were getting those two things mixed up. There's no probation that we're on for any type of annexation. It's just a state law that has passed during that time that basically stops all involuntary annexation.
Is that, is that over?
No.
No, that's a law.
That's a law.
It wasn't a time period, it was just.
There's no time period.
There's a ten-year window put on it when I came in in two thousand thirteen, so it'll be coming up eventually to be revisited, is my understanding. So it's a ten year.
But it changes out on.
So annexation cannot happen?
Involuntary.
Involuntary.
Voluntary.
We can't take any, any.
But you can go into them and speak to say, hey, would you like?
Yes.
Absolutely.
So that encompasses that. Any questions on that that y'all have?
Thanks for clearing that up.
I know you, you want to know probably what the ten year.
And neighborhoods basically come in, we're not going to take individual homes. We would probably take them by the block, the way it was set, like, you know. And as long as they're consistent and they touch each other, we can take, okay, if this row of homes, kind of like in Providence Downs.
Do you all have an annexation committee, or, I mean?
We, we do not. It's, it'd be great to have someone to go speak with them and actually speak what the reality is of what, because the, the biggest thing pushback we got is, you know, why, why do we, what do we get for being Marvin and stuff like that? So someone can.
Joe, so if you wanted to annex a particular location, and I have, as a homeowner, am in that location, and I raise my hand and say, I don't want it.
Right.
I don't have to come.
So it has to be.
Well, no, I mean, I think you could take the five houses to my left and the five to my right.
No, no, we can't. They have to be continuous, like, so we're only going to take it if you have ten homes in a row, and the middle one says no, those other five said no. This five that's touching Marvin, is my understanding.
Could come in.
Can come in, but that middle one is going to stop from us getting that. And that's a perfect example of that, is in Providence Downs, where they put in the, they're putting in the gates. We have thirty homes in there.
Okay.
That are Marvin, that we needed to do a little bit of agreeing to, like, we basically stepped aside and said, we're not going to have a, we're not going to be involved in this decision and stuff, if that's what they want.
Two things to that, Paul. Reason for that is, from a service delivery standpoint, you talk about law enforcement. If you're in the middle of their two houses and you have a call, how do you know where to respond?
No, I, I understand. I just, it sort of creates a veto, right? For any given homeowner.
Yeah.
But you're saying to start one, it's something, the initial one has to touch Marvin right now.
Yeah, but we're not going, we're not going to take one home. You know, we're going to do this, we're going to take a section of homes. The other, the Latin, most recent one was the issue with Powellville. We did the roads over at Weddington Chase. Well, you had the developer in that process where the legislature took over, there were twenty, thirty-some homes that weren't turned over to Marvin yet, and the developer said, if I don't have to pay taxes on it, boom. So now you had neighbors that were right next to other neighbors, where one's Marvin and one's not. So when we did the roads, we can't stop in front of their house and then continue two doors down or something like that. We, we basically said, look, if you want to be on this list, and you're top on the list, you need to convince through the HOA them to, so we, out of the twenty-eight or so homes, we got, and we weren't going to backcharge them. We were saying, from this point on, you're Marvin. How many homes?
It was twenty-ish, what's that, fifteen to twenty?
There's only like four or five homes that, and for them, that's, that's for the HOA to work out. But, but we are charging the HOA as if, you know, we, we divided it up by how many homes we're charging them, and says, okay, essentially, we're, we're getting the same amount, we're not getting deducted that, and that's on the HOA to take it up with those individual homeowners, whether they put a lien on that house to say, look, you got your roads improved, basically, for free. So that's, that's happened already.
So, Mark, to speak to the question that you just asked about contiguous and not, the statute actually allows you to annex non-contiguous within, I think it's maybe two miles.
Within a certain distance, yeah.
So we, we, we could have a plan, a policy in place that I'm not familiar with, where we don't do it based on X, Y, Z things, and I don't know what they are. One of the tasks that I will give to Rahit when he starts is maybe coming up with a annexation plan slash policy that entices people to want to, want to annex.
Sounds like a PR campaign.
Yes, yeah. Why you want to be annexed in. We don't have a lot of services from water, you know, trash, sewer, those things to entice people to come in, but we do have the quality of life. And hopefully, we will be able to put together a brochure that says, this is why you want to be annexed in. So that, that's the long-term plans. That'll be on his list once things settle down and he gets acclimated to things.
So would you say that, that in terms of the, the doughnut holes, right, that the village is open to, you know, voluntary annexation, you know, conversation?
Absolutely. I mean, there's no reason that Providence Downs South shouldn't be part of Marvin. They, they fit the mold. There's no reason Sedgfield shouldn't be part of Marvin. They're in the doughnut hole, but are you going to pay a tax if you don't have to?
One of the things that has happened in the meantime, right, is that the fear of being annexed by Charlotte.
That's right.
Is no longer there. So that was a reason people might have come here, say, okay, I'll go there rather than here.
Or more importantly, Waxaw. Waxaw was in play. And they, they, that Waxaw challenged us on it, and it was one individual, John Berisich, who went around to the large landowners, connected them all and said, look, they can't hop over. And Waxaw thought we did it illegally, and that was all volunteer, which was a big part by what John Berisich did, so.
So the last thing, are y'all done on annexation? Are you good on that? The last thing on your agenda was the community survey distribution. And I have spoken with Jessica, she's estimating around fifteen hundred for actually mailers, way less than what I thought. So I would assume y'all were all okay with that, which I would recommend that to Cancel at the time of their.
I'd recommend it.
Are you guys okay with that? Is it unanimous, everybody's okay with that?
What, can you just explain what?
Fifteen hundred dollars for mailers.
So to physically mail.
But we're also going to do the online, right?
And then they're going to go online from the.
She said that we could do, Jessica said that we could do a.
That includes postage, printing, everything?
Well, it's, I think, I think we were talking about just like a postcard that gave them like our code.
Postcard mailers, yeah.
It online and.
Yes.
Or they could probably, we'll, we'll design it so that if they need, if they want a paper copy, they can note, like notify us, yes, and we can get them a paper copy.
She said that we could do, you had asked about a password, Kelly. She said that we could do a password, but it would not limit the survey to one per household. It could be shared, so we would just have to know that that's the risk. But it would be on those mailers.
People have concern with that, and she might have a solution, so.
Okay.
We'll go with it as it is, and then when you guys review it, we'll get your feedback and make it, you know, changes if we need to.
Well, if you have the code, though, you probably know how many for each code you got back.
I assume it's probably going to be one code.
It's going to be one.
Oh, you mean one code for everyone?
That, that, that doesn't give us a good, I mean, someone could go in there and just continually.
It's not going to be comfortable at all, yeah, I don't think that's.
But Mary, Mary put a solution together for the last one, and I would imagine that we could do the same thing.
She's got some experience with it, so she's probably got some suggestions.
Okay.
Yeah, because it should be, I think we talked about one, one response per household. And I thought that was all taken care of by the survey company, that they're the ones that are protecting the fact that there can't be one household putting ten votes in or a hundred votes in for that matter. That I would really concern me.
Well, I would say this, if, if we don't spend the money on date integrity, like knowing that the people we got are the people who live here, then we might as well not do it because somebody's got to say, well, you can't trust it. I mean, then the whole thing was a half a charade.
That's imperative.
Yeah, so Chris, Christina, let's you and I talk offline, because I would imagine, like, Survey Monkey is a lot more generic compared to some of the other stuff that you could use. But if they can't, if they can't run a report on IP, like where IP addresses that the survey responders were coming from, like, I would imagine you'd filter them out. But, but let's, let's, you and I talk about security, maybe with Jessica, before we.
And I, I would just, I would say, looking, having, just looked at all the wonderful financial condition the county that we're in, and Marvin, I would say, if we're going to do a survey, let's spend what it takes to do it and make sure that our residents and only our residents have done it, and that's the information we're going to base future decisions off of. And if that costs more than we originally voted on, I think, you know, if it's important to do, it's important to do right.
Yeah.
Whatever it costs, it costs.
Let's, let's get our, what our options are from Jessica, the.
Okay.
Survey Monkey's just.
Okay. I'm going to quickly interrupt and now call for, that we do have a quorum now, Nick has arrived, and just making note that as of, you know, right now, we are at, and a reminder, we told everyone, we're not making decisions here in case this meeting is challenged. Down the road is, is not being a legal meeting, but we aren't making decisions, we're just here to get feedback from the planning board. But I just want to make a note that Nick has joined us at this point, so go ahead. Sorry.
So I'm good. If y'all are good, y'all can close out your meeting unless you want to stay to ask questions about the capital improvement that Tom had some questions on.
Could I just, one, just one question, just from you guys, the Council's perspective, could, just, could you guys tell us, is there anything you need from us? Anything you feel we could do better, or, you know, anything like that? Go quicker.
It's not back to so many standard questions?
I mean, as I said in the beginning, I guess, given the situation we've had to face all year and stuff, I mean, you guys are doing your job and stuff, like, everything we've asked of you, we've gotten back, I think, in a fairly timely manner and stuff. It's just a matter of, you know, so, so I'm looking forward to the survey that's coming up. You know, you're doing what's expected is what, I guess, but I don't know if there's anything else. These questions are all very good questions, and I believe there's more of community asking it rather than the planning board asking, because you're, you're asking these questions, rather than the planning board asking, because you're, you're asking these questions, I assume, not just as planning board, but as concerned citizens, too, so that's a good thing. And obviously, we don't have many citizens that are even showing up for this retreat to see which direction they're going. So for me, I'm, you know, I've been fine with how things are.
Do you plan on voting on the planning board applicant at your next meeting?
I would like to. I've talked to him.
What has to happen for you guys to vote on it?
It has to be on the agenda. It has to have a meeting.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. Yeah, and I have talked to him, too, and stuff, so I think he's the only applicant at this point, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and...
We had another one, but the person that was on file, Dusty Rhodes, they're moving out of Marvin, so they weren't eligible.
All right. I know we're over... Anything, but... Closing comment?
Well, we had a general topic.
You have one more item?
It was anything else anybody wanted to ask, you know, or input.
I wanted to ask one general thing regarding town hall as well. Have there, when I look briefly at the last design, had there ever been given any thought of perhaps expanding in a way that can be a revenue generator in terms of, like, if you think about the number of people who'd get a hall, like, I have a charity that rent the Marvin Eifert barn all the time for a reasonable price, and I know other people do as well, but it seems like, you know, once you do the, you know, all the civil construction infrastructure, you know, to add square footage and create a place where people could have a wedding reception, a banquet, a party, and rent it out, could be, like, probably, you know, with a community, small community of our size, I could see the thing almost, you know, being even, breaking even if you just added some kind of open square footage and whatever possible regulation around, you know, gatherings and temporary alcohol permits and stuff. I just thought it was something that would be probably valued by the community and might be, end up making it a revenue generator instead of a pure expense.
So if I could go first, I would say, anything outdoors is, obviously, we have a venue for it, anything outdoors. Anything indoors, I think the intent of this town hall was not only for us to conduct our meetings and have more up-to-date and, you know, things with us as far as technology goes and stuff, where the whole community can see what we're talking about rather than what we have, so there's money spent there. But I think indoor, we had planned to allow those HOAs who don't have a place to go to, a meeting space for that. The, there was talk, we proposed about if there is a second story, which I think is basically going to be rough, plumbed and rough cutout for upstairs. I agree with you, I think that's a revenue generator possible, because I've been approached by individuals who, he's just an accountant, that he doesn't want to have to go down to, he wants to be somewhere here that he can go to, that he could rent space. I have no problem, because at any given point, the lease runs out, if we need that space and we can move up there and move them out. It's, it would have to be something fairly small because of the amount of parking space that's available. What do you need? Oh, pass these around. But I, we had actually discussed it, we had, yeah, on that parcel.
That's what I'm saying, if you could turn that parcel into cash, you could use a different parcel, it could create a multi-use, multi-use center, I guess, with a little more design flexibility.
Are you talking about changing the physical building that it is right now?
Y'all might have to share.
Talking about making it a more multi-use, flexible design so that it can generate revenue for the community, as opposed to just whole meetings, because I don't believe there's a, I mean, I struggle with cost-benefit analysis of how much more successful the government's going to be in that expensive new space versus how successful it is.
So, I mean, I don't have a problem with doing something like that.
Again, I just wondered who's ever considered.
I'll go on record, and I've said this before, that we missed our opportunity with the home that was available on this corner, and the reason why is, if you look at the size of the town, and we have small meetings, we rarely, when we do have large meetings, we easily could use this space, we could use the church, or we could use the high school, or we could use the golf community to have a big meeting if we needed it. We missed that opportunity.
I agree, and what do you mean you missed it?
Meaning that they were literally a week or two, a week away from coming back to us and saying that they were willing to drop the price to get to something that, because we had a certain thing. So there was negotiations going on, and at the, two weeks before they were, and this is an individual's talking, I ran into her at the grocery stores, they were approached by a family that wanted to buy the home. I didn't see a need, and here's the beauty of...
But I mean, that's spilt milk, right? There's nothing we can do.
It is, but it was a contained price, too. It was maybe a $200,000 conversion cost to get to something that had some history. And here's the bigger point, we, you had, you had land that we owned on this end of the roundabout and land that we owned on the other end of the roundabout that we could do for whatever we wanted to do down the road, but we missed that opportunity. So now, we've spent so much with, with the plans, and my belief that, and we literally sketched it out, we tried to redraw it, it's not going to work, it's like putting a round, you know, peg in a square, this is what the architect has said. So the cost to kind of redo that, I think the plan, with everyone's staff had looked at it, I had looked at it, we made sure that we were getting what we wanted, but to put, make it look like what we want, they gave us very few options as far as...
So if I'm hearing you saying, "We're locked into a situation that makes what I propose not possible?"
Yes, because we've already had the construction plans, we've already spent over $100,000, and so money's been spent, and people don't want to spend more money to change it.
Mark, there is a section that we discussed in our architect meeting not too long ago about putting a community room in there. The space is still there, so if we wanted to come back at some point in time and add it, that's a possibility. There's also discussion of, you know, the farmer's market being there and an amphitheater space, so that's also potentially an add-on at a later point in time, too.
And then putting a second level right now, because everything in the first level, correct me if I'm wrong, is spaces used up and stuff on the first level. We see us not really outgrowing that for some time, but going to a second level, a couple of things come into play. Elevator, very costly, and the actual use.
Not compared to 20 years of rentals for weddings and...
I agree, but when it gets into what that can actually be used for at this time, what you use it for, but that, that throws a whole different thing in it, but I, small office space that doesn't require public to go to it, it's a big ADA issue as far as accessibility for, that even if we are going to use it, it's very, they're very specific, specific with the ADA, and I talked to them about who can be up there, even if it's government can be up there. Not a problem if you had an office there.
I don't know, I'm not talking about individual, I'm talking about people who always want to rent spaces to do stuff, and we're about to build a big space that has limited usage, and I would think that putting a second floor that we could rent out and generate revenue would be an attractive option in a small community. I believe that to be true, I just thought it was worthy of consideration.
It'll be, all I can say is, it'll be roughed out. If there's funding available to finish that, we can do pretty much, we have a footprint of what? Do we remember?
The entire thing is 55-ish.
5,500, so you, probably a little bit less, being the way it's structured and the facade we have is a little less, but...
I would suggest, I mean, I think it would be prudent to run a pro forma and say, "Well, if we rented it for X days a month at this amount..."
Then you get into 88, you know, automatically, and elevators there.
Yep.
Automatically.
Well, elevators, people have their homes, it's 20 grand for a $1.6 million building, 20 grand. I mean, this elevator, those expenses discussion doesn't resonate.
No, I know, it's just that it's not...
In terms of like the idea shot...
There's no, there's no plan for it right now in...
Well, I try bringing it up, I think it would be something good to consider.